Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and this is the regular hybrid meeting of the Livermore City Council. I want to welcome everyone. We had no closed session this evening, so I'd like to call the meeting to order and get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kick is absent for the record. Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Here.
And Mayor Warner is absent for the record.
Thank you very much. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we have several proclamations this evening. This is item three. Item three point one is a proclamation presented to Assistant Public Works Director Jeff Schaefer, declaring May fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two as Public Works Week. I'm going to read the summary of the proclamation. Whereas the Public Works Department is an integral part of our city and our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the Public Works Department encompasses water, sewer, streets, lighting, landscaping, fleet, facilities, solid waste and recyclables collection, asset management, and airport operations; and whereas the American Public Works Association has declared the week of May fifteenth through twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two as National Public Works Week in recognition of the importance of the hard work and dedication of the public's works employees. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims the week of May fifteenth through twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two as Public Works Week in the City of Livermore and encourages residents to recognize the contributions that public works staff make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Councilmember Monroe is going to present the plaque to Assistant Director Jeff Schaefer.
See if I've got that going. Yes, there we go. Thank you very much. Let's see if we can do this. I wanted to just add a couple of words, which are that I think my very favorite part, unless it's the library or, or is Public Works. And part of that is because the thing that keeps us most safe most of the time is working Public Works. So with that in mind, thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments and thanks to the City Council for this. Speaking on behalf of the hundred Public Works employees, we really appreciate the support that the council and that staff actually give us and also the residents. As mentioned in the proclamation, any of you that get up in the morning and on your way home, there's nothing that you don't touch, or there's that you touch everything that Public Works is involved in. And so we really appreciate it. So again, thank you for this great honor.
All right. Thank you all very much. And, and again, I just want to echo Councilmember Monroe's comments about our Public Works. Our team is terrific team and really appreciate everything you do. Our second proclamation is a proclamation declaring May as Jewish American Heritage Month, presented to Rabbi Milder, Milder, pardon me, I was asked about the pronunciation, Milder, of Congregation Beth Emech. I'm going to read a summary of the proclamation. Whereas Jewish Americans have been an important part of the American story and have greatly contributed to all our areas of American life and culture since our nation's earliest days. And whereas on April twentieth, two thousand and six, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish Heritage, American, Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, as a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens. And whereas generations of Jews have fled to the United States in search of a better life for themselves and their families, and these immigrants made invaluable contributions in support of equality and civil rights through their leadership and achievements. And whereas Jewish Americans are racially, ethnically, socially, politically, and economically diverse, with approximately twelve to fifteen percent of Jews in the United States being individuals of color. And whereas the City of Livermore recognizes the rich and diverse heritage of the Jewish American community and is enriched by the cultural contributions of local Jewish institutions and synagogues. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in appreciation of the achievements and contributions made by members of the Jewish community and calls upon all residents to celebrate Jewish Americans who have weaved the fabric of our country and community. And Councilmember Monroe will do the honor.
So this gives me a great pleasure since you and I know each other for a long time.
Thank you, Trish. Thank you, Vice Mayor Banano, and the City Council for this great honor. On behalf of Congreg- on behalf of Congregation Beth Emech and the Jewish Community Relations Council, please accept our gratitude for this recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month. In his letter to the first synagogue in the United States, President George Washington wrote that our government would, quote, "Give to bigotry no sanction, to persecution no assistance." How Jews are accepted or persecuted is the canary in the coal mine of democracy. Sadly, antisemitism is once again on the rise. The recognition offered to the Jewish community by this City Council is an important act affirming the place of Jews and indeed the vital role played by all ethnic and religious minorities in strengthening the fabric of communal life. We thank you for this proclamation and for the honor bestowed on the Jewish community for our contributions to the City of Livermore.
Thank you, Rabbi, and thank you so much for those words. Hard, hard to say, say it better than that. Okay, we'll move on to Citizens Forum. I'd like to ask the City Clerk if you could please explain the process. These are items that are not on our agenda. So please limit comments to items that are not on our agenda, and the City Clerk will explain the process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. First, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Next, for agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the Vice Mayor opens a public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer any questions from the public. However, the Vice Mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address speakers' comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide a comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak over Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce a conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. As is our process, we will be limiting the initial set of comments to a total of thirty minutes. We, everyone will get three minutes. We will go for thirty minutes, which will bring us to seven forty. It's now seven ten. Any additional comments after the initial thirty minutes will be taken after matters for consideration at the end of the meeting. Can we start with the first speaker, please?
Our first speaker is Gabe Halbert, followed by Hayden Sedan and Isaac Mendel.
Energy financing companies in our state. We provide financing for energy and water conservation, seismic and wildfire resiliency improvements for homes and businesses voluntarily through their property taxes in over three hundred twenty-five communities in California, including your neighbors Dublin, Pleasanton, San Ramon, Danville, and countless other Bay Area jurisdictions. Thank you for your time this evening. California property owners are facing a difficult reality. Historic drought, wildfires, and blackouts are becoming increasingly frequent, even as the state passes more aggressive legislation to attempt to stem our carbon emissions and convert our energy grid to primarily clean energy. That kind of dramatic shift can only happen if property owners have access to the natural disaster and clean energy. Property improvements needed, but too often those upgrades are out of reach with price tags in the tens of thousands of dollars. Therefore, alternatives to property improvement financing are critical. PACE Financing is one such program, a transformational public-private policy in place for over a decade that does not discriminate. Rather than monthly payments, property owners pay for the upgrades over time through an assessment added to their property bill with universal terms for every property owner and without the high variable interest rates and upfront cash required by most traditional financing options. Since AB twelve eighty-four was introduced and passed in two thousand and eighteen, the PACE industry has delivered best-in-class PACE financing with the highest standard of consumer protections in the country, including rigorous underwriting standards, financial disclosures, and verifying the ability to pay, among other measures. PACE delivers not only for property owners but for local economies as well, especially among the businesses that step up to provide these improvements. The impact to date is the injection of over seven point three billion dollars of private capital into local communities, creating over a hundred twenty thousand local jobs and generating more than fifteen billion dollars in local economic activity. Y-Green's commercial PACE program has unique features to serve the small-to-medium-sized business market that have often have barriers to traditional methods of financing with a project minimum of five thousand and a retroactive financing option on previously completed PACE-approved projects. In the other Alameda County jurisdictions we operate in, our projects have saved over one million gallons of water, five hundred thousand kilowatt-hours, and abated two hundred seventy-nine metric tons of carbon with zero cost or legal risk to these localities. These statistics are a testament to the effective public policy tool PACES to leverage private capital for public good. There is not a more beneficial program for your community to make available at no cost to the government and with so many advantages. Having a competitive PACE market is the only way to ensure the best outcome for property owners and the environment. So we encourage you to approve the GSFA PACE program in Livermore at a future meeting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hayden Sedan, then Isaac Mendel, and then Pedro Rodriguez.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I wanted to speak on the record about an issue that is of national attention but affects millions of people individually in Livermore and throughout the country, and that is reproductive rights. Last week, Politico leaked a draft majority opinion written by Justice Alito and other conservative justices to overturn Roe versus Wade. It leaves the fate of reproductive rights up to states. Twenty-six states are ready to restrict those rights in a way that is unsafe and unfair for women and proves invasive to their personal privacy. This is not about killing babies. This is about protecting the right of women and those able to carry a child to choose what they do with their body. Last week, I went to Dublin to attend a small pro-abortion protest organized by Dublin City Councilmember Sean Kumagai and attended by Dublin Mayor Melissa Hernandez, Vice Mayor Jean Josie, and other local leaders and pro-choice activists. That same night, I came to Stockman's Park to attend a similar protest event attended by Vice Mayor Banano, Councilmember Monroe, and Kick and other local leaders and community activists of all ages. The protests in Livermore and Dublin, like thousands of other protests nationwide, were organized on short notice but well-attended and supported by many people who recognize the need to preserve and protect these rights. Livermore and the entire Tri Valley are lucky to have leaders who will stand up and fight for these rights and work with state and federal leaders to secure those rights on a larger level, which support, which includes supporting the constitutional amendment recently proposed by Governor Newsom to enshrine this right in California's state constitution. We should all be so lucky to live in a state and a city where the reproductive rights of women and on a much broader level, the personal liberties of all citizens are recognized and protected by our elected leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Isaac Mendel, then Pedro Rodriguez, then Anthony Owens.
Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council, I stand before you as a proud member of the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department and Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four. I grew up in the Tri Valley. Fifteen years ago, I had the opportunity to come back to serve the community that has given so much to me, and thirteen years ago, give or take, I became a resident of the City of Livermore. The men and women of the Local nineteen seventy-four deserve a fair contract. Every day we go without a contract is a day that we go without the cost of living increase. I think you've seen, whether you drive past the gas station and see five fifty-nine gas, you go to the grocery store and you pay five gallons, things are getting more expensive every day. We've been there for you on the front lines of the pandemic. We've been responding to emergency recalls, and our Fire Prevention Bureau has been out conducting life safety inspections as well as construction inspections to make sure that the business of the city moves forward and the citizens of Livermore, the people who work here and the people who visit here are safe. So with that, I will give the rest of my time back to the floor. I just ask you to do what you can to get us a fair contract and get it soon.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Pedro Rodriguez, then Anthony Owens, then Frank Nasca.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pedro Rodriguez. I am a Livermore resident and a member of the Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four. I am here tonight to state how ashamed I am to work for an organization that would paint its employees with such a slimy brush. Recently, during unfair contract negotiations between the Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four and the LPFD negotiations team, a process of developing a clear, definitive, fair drug testing policy, the Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four negotiations team has only sought a fair drug testing policy that is in line with other labor groups in both cities. When suggested that the policy should include line personnel and management, the LPFD negotiations team, which is comprised of city officials from both cities, they stated that this is a blue-collar issue, not a white-collar issue. That's a backhanded comment not only to the firefighters that swore to protect the community, but to the community as well. Considering Livermore has flourished with deep blue-collar roots. If I'm not mistaken, City Manager Mark Roberts is hosting a bus tour of Livermore, providing history that includes from ranches to labs. Sounds pretty blue-collar to me. As a taxpaying Livermore resident, why would I want a history lesson about the blue-collar roots of Livermore from the same city officials backing an LPFD negotiations team making such disheartening comments? The Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four negotiations team has been transparent throughout this entire negotiations process. One occurrence from an employee that is no longer employed at the LPFD shouldn't be grounds for painting an entire respected organization with such a slimy brush. We are not asking for much more than to be treated fairly. Being out of contract now for a hundred and twenty-nine days is unacceptable. We urge you to please settle a fair contract. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Anthony Owens, followed by Frank Nasca and Justin Mung.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Vice Mayor. My name is Anthony Owens. I'm a citizen of Livermore. I have been since nineteen sixty-five. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the first responders in this room for the tireless and thankless job that they do. They're here for us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I find it highly disappointing that the Cities of Livermore, Pleasanton, and the Joint Powers Authority cannot resolve this issue with the entity of Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department. I find it disappointing that I have to waste my time, my evening, to come down here and speak on their behalf when I've read their contract and what they're asking for, and I find that their issues are nothing more than what some of the other entities within these two cities are getting with, for their contracts. I just wanted to say thank you to them and thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Frank Nasca, followed by Justin Mung, followed by Joseph McThorn.
Good evening. My name is Frank Nasca. I'm a member of Local nineteen seventy-four. I'm here tonight to speak about the contract. It's unfortunate that two of our members of the JPA aren't here tonight. Because it would be beneficial for them to be here to hear this from all of these members here. I'd also like to add on to what Councilmember Monroe said. I do also think that Public Works is a very important entity and group within our, our cities, but I'd like to also thank the Police Department who's here and Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department for actually being public safety and the ones who are on the front lines, making sure that the communities are safe. With that, we're here. We're seeking a fair contract. I don't think that any of you would enter into any kind of contract such as the one that is being issued to us or pushed upon us. The zipper clause that is being negotiated, I can guarantee you, there's not a single person in this room that would enter into a contract with another person that the other one could change that contract at any time without the other person's consent. I mean, that, that seems blatantly ridiculous. So what we're looking for is a fair contract. I think that all of you need to assist in making sure that this happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Justin Mung, followed by Joseph McThorn, followed by John Withers.
Good evening, Council. My name is Justin Monge, and I'm here today to speak on issues pertaining to delayed responses due to unfair contract negotiations with the Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four. In a recent City Council meeting, Councilmember Brittany Kick asked City Manager Mark Roberts the following question. Is it true that the response is delayed due to contract delay? City Manager Mark Roberts responded to the question with the following answer. The answer to that is no. Our fire department is still responding to nine-one-one calls across both Livermore and Pleasanton, so we want to be quite, quite clear about that. Mr. Roberts, this is concerning for me because you didn't answer the question appropriately. The question was about delays. To my knowledge, delays have increased with resources being out of position due to administrative assignments. For example, taking a Livermore fire engine out of service for eight hours a day to teach at the academy located in Pleasanton, that may not be a big, big deal to this council, but it is to me. I have three young children and a rather large extended family. So when you take engine ninety-seven out of service, the busiest engine in Livermore, might I add, you're jeopardizing my children's safety. When you take truck ninety-six out of service, you're affecting my in-laws and my brother-in-law's family. When you take engine ninety-eight out of service, you're affecting my brother-in-law and his children in Springtown. When you take engine ninety-nine out of service, you're affecting my parents and my brother's family. When you take engine ninety-one or ninety-three out of service, you're affecting my uncle and his family in Pleasanton. I know that the Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters will always continue to respond to calls, just as they did during the entire pandemic, whether the state is on fire or it's normal day-to-day emergencies. A few years back, when I was a new father, my daughter had a febrile seizure. To say that my wife and I weren't terrified is an understatement, and I understand that that's a very common occurrence in the world of medicine, but when you don't know what's happening, it's the worst feeling in the world, and I will say that within minutes after calling nine-one-one, an engine showed up and brought calmness to that chaos. Imagine that same event occurring with today's delays. These recent unfair contract negotiations with the Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four are disheartening. Over fifteen years ago, I decided to lay and plant my roots and build my family here in Livermore. My family decided to leave the City of Fremont in search of a community with great schools and great overall public safety. I say it's disheartening because just recently, the City of Fremont was rated the happiest city in the United States. Fremont is not having this problem with unfair contract negotiations. Fremont is, however, recruiting and retaining the most highly trained candidates throughout the state because of fair contract negotiations. Do what you can to bring resolution to this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Joseph McThorn, followed by John Withers, followed by Jonathan Heller.
Hi, Council. My name is Joe McThorn. I'm the president of your Livermore Pleasanton Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four. I know you've heard me talk several times over the past few weeks with the issues that we're having with these contract negotiations. I had this written down. You know that we're a hundred and twenty-nine days without a contract. I've sent you all the MMBA, the Brown Act information where you can be involved in these negotiations, whether it's the two JPA members that are not here, Mayor Warner and Councilmember Kick. You have that ability to make a difference. So instead of going over this, I want to ask you if you have any questions of me, because I haven't heard anything from you in regards to making any resolutions to this contract. We've asked for meetings. We've asked for open session meetings with your negotiating team, with the council, with us, and I've heard nothing. So where are we at in the contract negotiations with you? Do you have any questions of me? Okay, then we'll move forward. Like Justin had said, Councilmember Kick had asked about the delayed responses and, and due to these contract negotiations, that is absolutely a yes. There is delays in the community of Pleasanton and Livermore, and that has been going on for over two months because your firefighters will only work to their contractual obligations. We will no longer do administrative assignments, and you don't have the personnel to teach at the fire academy. So without a doubt, there is delayed responses. The information given by City Manager Roberts is absolutely incorrect. I want to hit on the LPFD website that appears to be coming from the fire department, which it is not. The fire chief has made no comments on that LPFD website that was orchestrated by the attorney, negotiating attorney, Arthur Hardinger, and the Pleasanton Human Resources Director for those responses. And you are allowing this to happen, so you are no less responsible for those comments that are misleading and misrepresenting as to what is happening, such as the delayed responses, such as the substance abuse policy. We have provided a substance abuse policy several months ago that mimics our police officers in Livermore and Pleasanton, that is ninety percent of the federal government does, that is acceptable throughout this state and this country. Yet, your negotiating team wants to target us for drug testing for incidences such as fighting a fire in the Arroyo where I scratched the, the fire engine. They want to say, Joe, go get a drug test. We believe you might be on drugs because everybody in the fire department is on drugs because one person in twenty-five years had an issue with PTSD and didn't get the treatment that he needed. So now you want to target and harass us. Those comments that you stated with, that your negotiating team stated that this is a blue-collar issue and not a white-collar issue, I don't know how that falls under the auspice of Livermore's philosophy of inclusion and equal and fair treatment, because all you're doing is segregating your firefighters. It's unfair. We need a contract.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
John Withers, followed by Jonathan Heller, followed by Chris Jessberg.
Hi, John Withers. Was a member of Local nineteen seventy-four firefighter for these two communities for thirty-one years, and I'd like to just come and talk to you a little bit about what's going on here. Obviously, many of you are totally know what's in, what's happening, but for the most part, I was part of the negotiations the last time around, and we've been going over this over and over again. I think it's been unfair process. I think a lot of things have happened over the last years. We've had some change of some city government on the other side as far as the manager and so on. It was a great deal because a lot of things had happened there we weren't too happy about, allegedly. And so what I'd like to use, you guys, yourself, Trish, Gina, Robert, Vice Mayor, if you guys could get directly involved and have some oversight of this, because anytime you guys could step in on any of this, and you've allowed this to go on and on and on, and you can have some direct oversight. And you can have some direct oversight because the old human resource director is gone, but is still heading this. And again, allegedly, you know, there's things that go on and they're no longer there. But we don't, I think that you guys could actually get involved, have some direct oversight and solve this for these people. These people are working so hard for so long. Their wages keep falling further and further behind. I think anybody could attest to that. Chief Tester here has been awesome, trying to integrate the organization for years, trying to get it integrated. We talked about this the last, at the last negotiations, we want to get more females, we would like African-American females, and there's only a few in that resource pool. We know that. And with the pay being so low now and it's fallen so far behind, you can't even get them. Chief Tester is going to have a hard time trying to get these women in the department if the wages keep falling behind because they go to Oakland or San Francisco or Santa Clara, some places that pay a lot more. So it's not about this or that. It's like, oh, we don't have the money. Maybe they don't want them. I'm concerned. And you guys took direct oversight. So you're not known as, well, we don't want any black women in our department. We do. And we want more females, but we can't get them because the pay has fallen down so low. This was, this was talked about at the last negotiations, like, oh, yeah, whatever. We just don't have the money. We know you don't have the money. So we need to see you guys get involved, maybe center who, that the original negotiating for the LPFD and to have some direct oversight and get in there and do something, make something happen. You don't want to be the people that don't integrate the department and how we want everybody, we want equity here. We want to raise the weights. I know it's not all on the table, but in years going forward, you might be able to. You've let yourself fall so far behind and you can't integrate the best people. So we want to get all those people. You don't want to be one of the people that, oh, yeah, well, we don't want those people. No, you do want those people and you need to pay for it. So we need to raise the wages. Listen to what these guys have to say. This is, this is, this is a bad situation. So anyway, your honorable people, and Mark Roberts has done a great job. Livermore has come a huge way over all these years. And I just want to say thank you and consider that. If you don't want to be noticed, doesn't want to hire the equity of the people. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Jonathan Heller, Chris Jessberg, and Scott Leathers.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Jonathan Heller. I've been a member of this community for over 35 years. I'm also a member of Local 1974, which if you don't know, that's this community's firefighters. We deserve a fair and equal contract, just like the labor groups have been given from both cities. During this global pandemic, I had a severe case of COVID. I now have scarred lung tissue and I've been diagnosed with lung disease that I will have for my entire life. Unknowingly, I brought COVID home from the front lines and my whole family contracted it, including my pregnant wife. My newborn had complications during birth and now has birth defects that she will deal with for the rest of her life. According to multiple doctors and all of her specialists, these were caused directly by COVID and during her utero. All of your firefighters and their families sacrifice what it takes to serve these communities that we love. We took an oath to do so, and every day we serve to the best of our abilities. You can imagine my frustration after dealing with life-threatening complications from my COVID. When I attended a meeting for our labor negotiations, papers were handed to us from the city, and on that it stated, "All members of this department have drug problems." That comment, along with drugs, are a blue-collar problem, and that the fire department is a necessary evil, are coming from those same individuals giving you information and updates from contract negotiations. These statements are not true. What a slap in the face to me, my family, and all the members who took oaths to serve the people in our community. I'll leave you with a suggestion to verify information you received. That same group I talked about is informing you of our contract negotiations. That's the same group that has spent over $500,000 of taxpayer money fighting their own employees, us, the firefighters, over various issues these past few years. And when those issues went to a third party, non-bias arbitrator or judge, they were ruled in favor of the union. It's time to wake up and realize that your fire department members are not bad people. We care. We're not on drugs, and we want a fair contract, just like every other labor group has received. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chris Jessberg, followed by Scott Leathers, followed by Pete Patterson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I'd like to introduce myself, Chris Jessberg. I'm a proud citizen of the city of Livermore. And I'm also one of your fire captains with the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department. And I know you don't know me. Usually, we say I meet you on probably your worst day. So I'd like to introduce myself. And then, you know, when we're faced with adversity and faced with tough times, you as our boss, as the city council and city manager, the mayor, the citizens, you expect me to rise to the best performance I can possibly rise to in that one moment that you meet me. Now, I've had an amazing career. I'm going to hit 30 years here in November, and it's been an amazing ride. And one thing we always talk about in the fire service is stay engaged. You want your firefighters to be engaged. You want the firefighters to show up to your house in your worst moment to be engaged so we can do the best job we can. Well, I'm asking you to be engaged. This is a tough time for us all. I have two daughters in high school, graduating seniors, and would start college in the fall. My wife works full-time, but we live in Livermore. It's expensive. We're asking for a fair contract. We're asking to be treated fairly. I don't do drugs. I have nothing to hide, but the drug policy that you're proposing is absurd. The zipper clause is absurd. If you look at what you're proposing to us, you would expect us, in just common sense approach, to say, this is absurd. We would never agree to this. We would never want you to agree to something like that. What I'm asking of you, Vice Mayor, councilmembers who are here tonight, is to get engaged. This is your fire department. The city of Pleasanton, the ex-HR manager and the ex-city manager, they're running the show. And this isn't their fire department. So get engaged. Talk to us. Listen to us. Ask questions. That's all we can ask from you in tough times, is that when times are hard and we're looking for you to do your job, to do the best job you can do. And if we all stay engaged in this career and stay engaged in what we do for a living, we're going to make this a better fire department for our community, and we, as the Livermore Pleasanton firefighters, are going to strive to make this the best fire department in the county, in the state, in the nation, because we're proud, proud to be here serving. But it takes a lot out of us at this time of tough times when you're not listening to us. So I thank you for your time, and I, please, I urge you, come to resolution. Listen to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Weber, how many more speakers do we have?
Two more speakers, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Two.
Two more? And any on Zoom?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead and finish this out. Thank you so much.
As a quick reminder, we are broadcasting over a couple of different platforms. So if you're providing a public comment this evening, if you could please make sure that you're speaking into the mic. We have received some feedback that it's difficult for our other platforms to hear the speakers. Our next speaker is Scott Leathers, followed by Pete Patterson.
Hi there, and thank you for your time. My name is Scott Leathers. I've been a Livermore resident for the last seven years. And as I was coming here to speak tonight, I pulled up an article that I just want to read the heading to it. This is from June 6 of 2019. It says, "Man Gets Second Chance at Life Thanks to Livermore Firefighter." I was that man, and I am that man who's here today because of being introduced to Gustavo Trejo, who was a Livermore firefighter who saved my life almost four years ago in August of 2018. I had a heart attack and I flatlined in the ambulance, and Gustavo was there to bring me back. And when I came to, the first thing I woke up to was Gustavo looking at me saying, hey, your heart just stopped, but I got it going again. Please look at me. Don't stop looking at me and don't stop breathing. And I have an 11-year-old son, and I have a wife here in Livermore who I'm here today because of Gustavo and because of, he came to work and he did his job. And when I hear some of the comments about timeliness and things like that, he was there at the right time when he needed to be, and he saved my life. We're friends to this day. We get together as families. I know his wife and his two beautiful children, as he knows my family as well. I've got to spend Christmas with him and his family. He's met my parents. But I just wanted to, as a personal testimonial, to say that I want to thank the Livermore Fire Department and Gustavo for allowing me to be here tonight, because if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The final speaker is Pete Patterson.
Evening. My name is Pete Patterson. Been a resident for almost 43 years, going on 44 here soon. Just hearing the things back and forth about our local firefighters, LPFD, we need to sign the contract. Every day that the contract's not signed, you're jeopardizing the public's lives as well as potential fires that are already coming through the pipeline. This needs to stop. Our city needs to start pushing forward, sign the contract. Because at the end of the day, they were there for us during the pandemic. We need to be there for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, that concludes public comment.
We're not getting a lot of volume up through our speakers up here. I don't know if someone could. We heard the speakers just fine, but you're not coming through very strongly. But that was the last comment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the citizens forum. And we move to item five, the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input must submit a speaker card or use the raised hand feature in Zoom during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. First up here, is there anyone who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar tonight? Just pulling an item. No. All right, I will go ahead and open public comment on the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any item?
Vice Mayor, we have Dorothy, Cadence, Kaylee, Calvin, and Naomi, who will be presenting together.
Hello, we are going to be performing a song from our own musical called Insert Future Here to be able to have a grant, hopefully, to produce these music professionally.
You will open then at the end of your season. You can write about anything you want to do while now. Do you want to be? Operated and you have been switched now. This is for you alone.
What do they expect me to write?
The words, the words that don't come to mind.
Dear Felix.
Laying sheet of paper, 20 more minutes of class.
Dear future.
Dear future.
I don't know what to say.
I don't know what to say.
Dear future Felix, Felix of the future.
Just start.
A pencil in your hand.
Just start.
Here goes nothing.
Just start.
Dear me. Dear me. I'm sitting in class on a Monday rewriting this letter, this token of time gone by. I'm sitting in homeroom inserting my secrets, my future and present. I don't know why. It's not like I'll change or forget or lose sight of the person I am. But I'm listening to myself in this letter. I'm betting on you to be better. I'm nervous, I'm hopeful, I'm certain, I'm searching, I want all the answers. I want to be different than hoping and ready for any of the good griefs and good breathes. Good place for us, we're older at least. A basket's not before. A basket's still in store. Four more years, dear me. Dear stronger, cooler, taller, wiser, closer, carefree, better future me. Yes, you are not a loser. Thank you.
Okay, best consent calendar ever. Everybody agree? Thank you so much. That was item 5.7. That was wonderful. Thank you all so much. Thank you for being here and
Don't you want to wait and see if we vote for you?
That was wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, any, we are going to close the public com, no, no.
We have one public comment over Zoom.
Wow, I would hate to follow that, but please.
Lanning Thompson, please unmute yourself.
I'm Lanning Thompson, and as an officer of Interfaith Housing, I would like to thank the city for all its support. And I just lost the thing I was trying to read. And thank you for awarding us more money for our project that we're doing with Satellite Affordable Housing Associates to build 140 senior apartments at the end of Pacific Avenue. This will help us gather the necessary funds. Thank you.
Was that the last comment?
There are no more requests to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right, I'll bring it back up here. Anybody have any comments or questions? Please.
I would just comment, first of all, I would also like to thank the group from, from the high school group, the joint high school group. They are, as you'll hear later, winners of the Dreammakers and Risk Takers Award from Innovation Tri-Valley. It was my deep pleasure, and Councilmember Carling's deep pleasure, I believe, to hear them. This is the second time we've heard them. So we're really excited by this. This is what, and it is item 5.7. But this whole consent calendar is full of ways in which this community builds and lifts up in different ways from citywide landscape maintenance, which, you know, just helps us look and feel better to, to what Lanning Thompson talked about with providing housing for, you know, senior housing to providing arts. This is an amazing consent calendar. And I just, I just want to say thank you to city staff for making this happen. And thank you to the city of Livermore for being a city which supports and lifts up all of us. And with that, can I make a motion?
Or you want to go ahead first? We're going to go ahead, and then I have a question as well.
Yeah, as Councilmember Monroe mentioned, I was also at the ITV Dreammakers and Risk Takers and had the pleasure of hearing those five vocalists that we heard tonight. And I think we should all be proud, not only of the students, but thank the teachers at both high schools. And in particular, Carol Hovey is somebody that two of my kids went to Livermore High, worked with her in many, many different plays during their high school career. You know, and they're in their mid and late 40s. So that was a while ago, and Carol is still turning out fantastic talent at the high school. So again, congratulations on, on being part of that and the creativity that each of you showed in putting that together. I think that's fantastic. I agree with my colleague on the consent items. I think the dream Big Mural will be exciting. I do have to point out that it was limited to the Sandia, California astronauts because Sandia has more than one astronaut, but they are at the laboratory in New Mexico. So I just wanted to point that out. I see Mr. Burnham, the owner of the building, is here tonight. So he and I have already had this conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. I have a couple of questions about an item, two items. The first is item 5.3, and that is to execute the First Amendment of an agreement with Terracare Associates, who's our citywide landscape maintenance service. So my question is, I know that AB 1346 has passed, and that's the bill that phases in, phases out gas-powered landscape equipment, and I think that needs to be, that trans And I think that needs to be, that transition needs to be complete by 2024, I believe. And my question is, what are we doing both with our city staff who uses the gas-powered maintenance equipment and our contract contractors who use that equipment to affect this transition?
Honorable Vice Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and that bill that you spoke of does have deadlines to both begin the process and complete that process. And I'm happy to report that your city staff is already ahead of schedule, already starting that process. And so that process is gonna have two different parts to it. One is working with our contractor and the equipment that they use and to phase out gas-powered equipment and phase in alternatives to that. And we expect to do that essentially, beginning in the next, the fiscal year after this, so long before the deadline comes into play. And we've already started those discussions. Your city staff is already in the process of beginning to evaluate the specific alternatives that we're going to equip our staff with on that. And so in both of those cases, we do take that very seriously and have already started that process, and we will be, we will be ahead of the state deadline for both our contractors and our city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for that. Really encourage us to just do just what we're doing, get ahead of it and, and lead in this area. I think there are lots of programs with incentives. Hopefully, our homeowners and our residential contractors who are in this business will, will follow suit. Thank you for that. My other question is on five dot four, and that is executing the Second Amendment of the Agreement with West Coast Arborists. My question there is, and the staff report mentioned that we are in the process of doing a tree inventory. And I was just curious if you could give me a quick, quick update on when we expect that to be completed.
So you'll remember that the council has seen the tree inventory before, both when it was initially authorized, and then to augment the, the request for budget on that. And that was because we actually have more publicly owned trees than we estimated. So that was actually kind of a good problem to have. But to answer your question directly, we expect to be done with our tree inventory by the end of July of this year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I assume we'll get a report on that?
You will then get a report on that.
Okay, thank you, Vett. With that, I'm ready for a motion.
I would like to move the consent calendar. I will, I will not do it in song, however.
Well, second.
Ms. Weber, may we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Hi.
And Councilmember Kik and Mayor Warner are absent for the record.
Alright, motion passes three to zero. We will move on from the consent calendar into public hearings. We have three this evening. The first one is a, item six point one, is a hearing to consider or request for site plan design review, investing tentative map, tentative track map to develop the northwest corner of North Canyon's Parkway and Triad Place. The development consists of three-story condominium buildings with a hundred and twelve total units, including twenty-two units affordable to medium, median, and moderate income levels, and twelve accessible units. The applicant has submitted for a density bonus under Government Code Section six five nine one five. Can we get the staff presentation, please?
Honorable Vice Mayor, Jake Potters, our associate planner and project planner for this item, will lead us through the presentation on this.
Just one moment, please, while I prepare the presentation.
Mr. Potter, could you bring the microphone up just a little bit closer to you, please?
How's this?
Better.
Thank you. Alright, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we'll be discussing the proposed condominium project at Triad Place, which implements the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. By way of background, the city council re-adopted the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan and certified its final supplemental EIR in November of 2020. The plan covers approximately eleven hundred acres in the northwest part of the city around the Isabel interchange. The plan's intended to create a complete transit-oriented development neighborhood that's walkable and bikeable with increased housing and transportation options. Specific plan's also intended to streamline the city's development process. However, each development project does require a review through the normal entitlement process. The project for your consideration this evening is one such project. So the project site is located at the northwest corner of North Canyon's Parkway and Triad Place, and it's approximately five acres in size. It's located or situated in an office park environment, and all surrounding parcels are within the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. The proposal by De Nova Homes consists of twelve three-story buildings that front the public right-of-way and a central park. A hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve condominium units are proposed, with unit sizes ranging from a thousand to eighteen hundred square feet in size, with one, two, and three-bedroom unit options, or three-bedroom options. Twenty-two units will be affordable, and twelve will be accessible. Project also proposes approximately eighty-seven hundred square feet of a central park and twenty-six hundred square foot dog park to provide for common activity and recreation space for residents. Site will be, will be subdivided to accommodate the twelve buildings, street network and open space network. Access will be provided from Triad Drive and an access drive along the western property boundary. Project does meet the specific plan's target density development standards, apart from the requested state density bonus incentive, which will be explained in further detail on a subsequent slide. A class four bike lane, which is essentially a bike lane with a physical separation, and a new bus stop will be provided along the project frontage, along North Canyon's Parkway, in conformance with specific plan policy. Project street frontages will be landscaped with a double row of trees, providing screening and softening building edges. Landscape plan exceeds tree preservation ordinance requirements, and would produce an attractive, pleasant, and shaded streetscape. The project proposes three unique building types: back-to-back townhomes, row townhomes, and stacked flat design. Each will be a condominium unit, and each building will be three stories tall with thirty-six foot, approximately thirty-six foot height. Buildings are similar in height to surrounding office buildings. The project proposes a detailed contemporary architectural style, which is consistent with the industrial and office character of surrounding development. Key elements of a contemporary design are unconventional volumes, asymmetry in large windows, which are all presented in the architecture. Images on the screen represent one of the styles that will front North Canyon's Parkway. Project's extensive detailing and architectural style conformed to specific, specific plan and the design standards and guidelines. As in the Greater Bay Area region, there's an urgent and significant need for affordable housing in Livermore. To ease the need for affordable housing, the state legislature passed a series of bills to aimed at streamlining the approval process for housing projects. This project requested relief under both the SB three thirty or Housing Crisis Act and State Density Bonus laws. In conformance with these laws, the city vested the project's development fees and development standards at the time of submittal and granted a single incentive to waive the interior setback standard. Waiving the interior setback allows the project to be built to the densities contemplated by the specific plan, and is compatible with existing residential development nearby. Consistent with the specific plan and the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, the project will provide twenty-two affordable units dispersed throughout the project site, which is highlighted in the graphic on the screen. In support of the city's general plan, climate action plan, and specific plan, the project will incorporate sustainability measures into its operations and design. For example, the project will be all-electric and proposes rooftop PV arrays that would provide electricity without local emissions. Garages will be EV charger-ready, and there will be three EV chargers on site. Recycled water will be used for all irrigation throughout the project's carry-through purple pipes, as you can see on the screen. All plants will be medium or low-water users, and many plant species will be natives and pollinators, which are conducive and well-suited to Livermore's climate. Finally, the project's an infill development located directly adjacent to the Lafta bus line, connecting to Bart to the west and the Labs to the east through the downtown, which increases the options for alternative modes of transportation for the site's residents. On April fifth, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended project approval. Ultimately, the project's consistent with the general plan, specific plan, climate action plan, and the design standards and guidelines. For these reasons, the Planning Commission and staff recommend that the city council adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and adopt a resolution approving the project. That concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions you may have, but first, I believe the applicant team would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
With everything that the staff has said today, we have no comments on the conditions of approval with which we concur. We have worked very closely with staff over the past months, and they've worked very closely with us, and we're very happy to be hopefully building a new community here in Livermore, especially in this Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. I love the area, biked through it quite a bit, so thank you very much. And we're here to answer any questions, should you have any. Trent Sanson is also here. He's VP of Art Land Acquisition and Entitlements with De Nova Homes as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for people to speak on this agenda item. Do we have anyone from the public who wants to speak on this item?
Vice Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up here for questions and comments. I'm not using the raised hand feature in Zoom, since there's only two of us, or only two of you. So whoever was first, please go.
Yeah, so thank you, and I Jake, and for the report, and see, I appreciate it also. I don't see any planning commissioner members here today, but I, it was very thorough job, I thought, they did in looking at the proposal and making some recommendations. So I appreciate the all-electric nature of the development. The one question that came up a couple of times during the planning commission conversation was guest bicycle parking. So can you tell me where that stands? I didn't hear about that this evening.
Absolutely. So the specific plan does not require guest bicycle parking, but based on Planning Commission recommendation and staff concurs with the recommendation, the project's conditioned to provide bicycle parking. And so we'll work with the applicant in the post-entitlement phase to provide it in a logical location with a substantial number of stalls.
And then the let's see, the EV charging, is that, that, that'll be EV-ready, right? So it'll be up to the person living there, the folks living there, to decide whether it's gonna be a level one or a level two charging, what they might need.
That's correct. So each garage within the townhome units will be EV-ready, and then there are also three chargers in the guest parking area provided.
That somebody will use a credit card to charge their vehicle, for example. Is that the way that works?
Generally, they, you would pay for the service, yes.
Yeah.
They don't take cash?
It's not free, is my point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
I, I don't have a lot to add. This is, I was really pleased to see the General Isabel project when it came forward. Sometime in the past, the past is the past, but it was really good then. This is really nice to see this project come to, you know, begin the process of actually making that plan reality. I, I sit on the Cal City's Housing Economics and Community Development Legislative Commission, and we talk about housing a lot. Now, we talk about the nature of needing to go forward to provide housing. So it excites me that Livermore has made a commitment to do that, that this is a complete community that will do that. And then when I look at the way that the future has been integrated into this with the, you know, in sustainable ways, part of me says, wow, look at us going forward, and the other part of me goes, you know, by the time this is built, my, my bet is there'll be more stuff. So the, the plus minus of technology, right? But I do find this, I, I want to appreciate the city staff. I want to appreciate the planning commission. And I want to appreciate both the community and the developers for making a plan go forward that will really shine.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really appreciate the report and appreciate our applicant. This is really exciting for me. When I was on the Planning Commission, I don't know, four or five years ago, we first started hearing about the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. And it's just very exciting to see the first project. This is the, to my knowledge, this is the first application of first of what I hope will be many, so we can get that neighborhood built out. And again, as Councilmember Monroe mentioned, this is our goal is to have this be a complete neighborhood, have grocery, retail. We might need a school out there at some point. We're gonna have Valley Link, that's the plan. We have bus service. I mean, it's just, this is just such a great opportunity for us as a city, and and you all are first, so we thank you for that very much. And I'm very excited by the fact that it's the first neighborhood that I'm familiar with that's gonna have purple pipe, recycled water for irrigation, correct? All-electric, charging stations, EV charging stations, and solar. My knowledge, this is the first one. And I, again, I hope it'll be the first of many in our new neighborhood, which we, we have the opportunity to do some really cool stuff, and I think we're, we're just already starting down that path. I, I love the fact that we have some stacked flats. We've talked about that often in Livermore, where people who may not have the same mobility they had when they were younger, get to be on one floor but have the same, same room as a two or three-story townhome. I, I also appreciate the Planning Commission for all the work they did on this one. They really laid a lot of groundwork for us and, and made some important changes, I think, that, that our applicant have, has accepted. So we really appreciate that. Trails and the walkability is gonna be a big part of this. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some funds from some of our transit agencies for building out some of those trails and, and paths. So I'm, again, very happy to support the item. And if there are no other comments, I will ask for a motion.
I'll move the item. Move staff recommendation.
And I'll second that.
May I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Hi. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Looking forward to those stacked flats. Alright, our second public hearing this evening is item six point two. This is a hearing to authorize negotiation of a development agreement with Isabel Portola Owner LLC for a mixed-use project with residential, office, and neighborhood-serving commercial uses within the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. Can we get the staff presentation, please?
Honorable Vice Mayor, continuing on our theme of Things Isabel this evening, our next project is gonna be presented by Associate Planner Ashley Vera. Is Vera?
Alright, give me one minute to share my presentation. Alright, good evening, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, I will be presenting a request to authorize negotiation for a development agreement with Isabel Portola Owner LLC for a mixed-use development in the Isabel Neighborhood. The project site is approximately forty-five acres and generally bound by Portola Avenue to the north, Isabel Avenue to the east, I five eighty to the south, and Shea Center Drive to the west. The plan envisions a mix of residential, office, neighborhood-serving commercial, and a neighborhood park development on the property. In July of 2020, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate a development agreement with PGM Communities LLC, also known as SunCal. The property has since been sold to a new owner, Isabel Portola Owner LLC, and authorization to negotiate a development agreement with the new property owners being requested tonight. The Livermore Development Code requires the initial review for a development agreement application by the city council. The city council authorization is required before staff can begin those negotiations. This authorization does not predetermine future city council actions, and the city council retains the discretion to approve, revise, or deny the ultimate development agreement. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use development with residential, office, neighborhood-serving commercial, and a neighborhood park development. The graphic shown on this slide shows the land use diagram from the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. And the project site shown on this graphic is outlined here in red. The residential uses are shown in yellow, tan, and brown. The office uses are shown in purple. The neighborhood commercial serving uses are shown in red, and the park is shown in green with a star. The applicant's plan will ultimately be evaluated for consistency with this land use plan and the plan policies in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan, and will ultimately be reviewed by the Planning Commission and city council. The general topics of negotiation. The general topics of negotiation are shown on this slide and include the terms, the land uses, development intensity, provisions for public uses, the amenities and performance measures. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with negotiating the terms for the development agreement to be considered ultimately by City Council. That concludes staff's presentation. Available for questions, and the applicant is also here, should you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
Vice Mayor, no comments have been received.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back here for questions and comments.
So could you, thank you for the presentation. Could you just walk through what we could expect to see next if we approve this tonight?
Sure. So staff would return and begin discussing the draft terms of the development agreement as well as the concept plan, the site plan for the proposed property. We would also discuss whether the approach is to go through the site plan designer review process, but ultimately what you would see is us returning with a draft document showing a site planning conformance with the, the generally conformance with the site, with the, sorry, with the specific plan. And we would bring that back for your review.
So roughly, how's, when would that be? I don't want to say soon, because it probably will be longer than we expect, but when might we see something come back to us?
Sure, it would be a matter of a couple of months at the very least. Yeah, we have to get together with, with the applicant and discuss the plan, so.
So sometime in the fall, probably, is what you're talking about.
Potentially, maybe later, yes.
And to be clear, just approving this, this evening doesn't obligate us to approve anything in the future, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, that was a good question. I wanted to make that clear as well. Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Sure, I'll, I guess we're taking turns here. I'll move the, I'll move staff, staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik, I'm sorry, Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate the report. And we will move on. We have no matters for consideration this evening. Move on to item eight, council member reports and matters initiated.
We have one more item under your hearings.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all about Public Works.
All right, my apologies.
No, Public Works didn't take up their only shot tonight with the resolution proclamation that you gave them. We do have one more.
Yeah, I know, they didn't take the rest of the night off. I'm so sorry. All right, this is item 6.3. It's a hearing to determine if the rates charged by Livermore Sanitation, Inc. for solid, solid waste and recycling collection services effective July 1st, 2022 comply with the approved rate methodology and approval of an associated agreement for rate year thirteen. May we have the staff recommendation, please? Staff presentation, please.
Well, good evening, Vice Mayor Banano and members of the City Council. My name is Judy Erlinson, and I'm the city's Public Works Manager. Livermore Sanitation, or LSI, began serving the city of Livermore in July 2010 after a competitive selection process. The incumbent waste management did not submit a bid. In April 2020, the City Council approved the third and amended restated agreement with LSI or franchise agreement extending the contract term by a minimum of ten years. The item before you tonight requests that the City Council consider the annual adjustment to LSI rates for the upcoming rate year thirteen, which coincides with fiscal year 2023. The franchise agreement states that LSI proposes rates, and it's the City Council's responsibility to approve rates by determining if the proposed adjustment complies with the methodology as described in the franchise agreement. In January 2022, Livermore Sanitation submitted a rate adjustment application indicating that an overall 0.58% baseline cost increase was warranted beginning July 1st, 2022. In addition to mitigate anticipated future costs related to inflation, labor and new state regulation, staff is recommending an additional 1.42% adjustment to fund contributions to the existing rate reserve account. In any year, it is at LSI's discretion to apply rate increases over all rates proportionately or to focus an increase on one type of customer or sector. LSI has proposed a total increase of $1 per month for cart customers, and the recycling and organics discount for commercial customers would be reduced from a 25% to a 20% discount off of rates for an equivalent level of solid waste collection. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the upcoming rate year thirteen rates effective July 1st, 2022, and approve an amendment related to the rate reserve fund. Thank you for your consideration, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Erlison. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
Vice Mayor, no comments have been received.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back here. Have any comments or questions?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I was just, something just occurred to me is LSI and other franchise agreements are going to be saddled with fulfilling 1383's requirements. I mean, the re- I'm happy that it's reasonably low. Don't get me wrong. I just wonder, in the future, are they going to be stuck with a bigger bill because of 1383?
So as part of the extension negotiations with, which happened three-ish years ago, we had draft regulations at that time.
I know.
And so we incorporated the requirements of SB 1383
Okay.
into the extension. So the anticipated costs are baked into the current rates.
Okay.
Of course, no one has any experience implementing this, so. But we're trying to hedge a bit with the rate reserve fund and, and other programmatic changes, applying for grants, receiving grant monies to help implement this and offset some of the costs.
Yeah, I think it's very prudent, because 1383, I think, as you pointed out, is sort of the implementation of this is unknown as we move forward. And I do think, I appreciate that that we and LSI were thinking, looking ahead with regard to 1383 as we negotiated the last contract. So I'm happy that at this point that it's, seems like a reasonable increase as a dollar per customer. So, all right, I, I support the point.
Any other comments or questions? I have a related question to, is it SB or AB 1383? Are we going to hear again about, at some point, just about how that's going with all the composting requirements and all that? Just a question about whether we're going to get an update at some point.
We could give an update at, at some point in the future. We do have some plans, particularly for the procurement of some of the compost and mulch. As you know, we did our compost giveaway just a couple of weeks ago, and
Right.
that put a small dent in our procurement requirements, but we're looking at some other options, too. And we can do that.
You got a word being small.
Do we need, and it's a big, it's a big pile, and we made a small dent. I get it. Is, is that something I need to do as matters initiated to ask that, or can we just bring back an update?
That will come back automatically.
Great, thank you very much. All right, I will entertain a motion then on this item.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I will second, not only was it your turn, but it's your subject, so.
All right, how to get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Aye. Motion passes, item passes three to zero.
I just, I just wanted to appreciate Councilmember Carley's work on Stop Waste, which really has to do with moving us forward, you know, working regionally to move us forward in all, all areas. So, thank you.
Now, I think we are ready to move on to, we have no matters for consideration, so we'll move to item eight.
And Vice Mayor Banano, your city manager, Mark Roberts, and I do just have a very quick update to share with you. I don't normally have a report. But you did receive testimony this evening, and so we did want to give you just a quick update. First was that our firefighter local declared impasse on March 1st. So the reason we're in the process we are in now, which will lead to fact-finding, is at the request of our labor group, and we are certainly in agreement with that. We've set a joint date that works for both parties, and that is just two weeks from today. So I can't tell you how excited we are to be sitting down with a fact-finder, with labor and management to work through the issues. And with any luck, we'll ultimately have resolution of this issue relatively soon. So I did want to be quite clear about what process we're in and where that request came from. It did come from the local itself. And that is their right to request fact-finding and to declare an impasse, and they did, took both of those steps. And we are essentially supporting the process that they requested. And in a couple of weeks, we'll be before the fact-finder, who will issue an impartial report. And of course, you all will hear about that as we update you after that report is issued normally. Well, it's by law, within 10 days of that, but we're hoping to get it a little sooner than that. So hopefully, before too long, we'll have some additional information and be able to move forward. Of course, we very much do value all of our employees and our firefighters as well, and very much would like to be in contract like we have with every one of our other groups that we've negotiated with. So certainly look forward to that. And with that, that's the conclusion of my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I will bring it back up here. Who would like to start? Councilmember Carling. I just remember, this is my first time. I don't know who to call on first.
Yeah, so I submitted my report this morning on meetings that I attended. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I talked about Dreammaker Risk Takers meeting, so I won't talk about that anymore, but I, many of us have been participating in farmers' markets on Thursday, so I certainly find that enjoyable, and it's not freezing cold out there, but it'll warm up. And we certainly, I think we'd all like, if we're out there and the city staff, some of the city staff are out there saying, as well, to talk about what the work they're doing. So I encourage the public to stop and chat with us when we're out there, bring things that are on their mind to our attention. So I appreciate that. Also, on Thursday, the 28th, I went over to the Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance Award Celebration. They give out some funding grants, and they, they've opened up a new office just north of the Haven Thrift Shop on L Street. And they have space there for, for other nonprofits to use at a reasonable cost. And they also have space there for even those companies that are looking for, that are making, looking to make a profit. So, for example, I know Councilmember Kik and her team, and the company for where she works, had a brief meeting in that space as well. So the Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance is now ensconced in that, that building just next to the Haven. On the 4th, I went up to Sacramento with other members of the Tri-Valley elected. So the mayor from Danville was there, the vice mayor from Santa Ramon, council member from Dublin. Unfortunately, nobody from Pleasanton was able to participate, but it's organized by the lobbyists that the five cities employ. And they set up some meetings with our local electeds. So we did have a chance to meet with Rebecca Bauer-Kahan and Steve Glazer, as well as a couple of others that are in neighboring districts and talk about what their concerns are, what our interests might be. For example, Valley Link, homeless, and sort of all the things that you can, might think about climate change and so on. I think the things that are front of mind to us in the Tri-Valley, and I thought it was a very interesting and informative and productive time spent there in Sacramento. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Monroe.
Well, I was unable to submit my report online today due to some other, I was unable to do it. So this will be a little bit longer than shorter. Before that, I wanted to say, Mr. Roberts, I appreciate your discussion of the ongoing negotiations. And I wanted to let the, the firefighters know that, you know, they've been heard, and that I appreciate the way the process is going forward, that we have a process that will, you know, ultimately find resolution. I wanted to, both some of the events of the past couple of weeks and the consent calendar made me think about the role of government. And so I kind of wanted to frame what I'm talking about with something that actually came from my daughter recently. She wrote, "People say that God won't give you what you can't handle, but that is not my observation of the world. There are many people who can't handle what life has given them. I see them walking the streets in my suburb with all their possessions and shopping carts, and I see them in the news crossing borders to flee untenable situations. We have failed to protect people who already exist from these situations." And I thought about that with my own family history, where I am the grandchild of immigrants, and I have seen the way in which the trauma of that kind of movement has affected us down one generation after another. Each generation, thankfully, making progress. But that's not necessarily the case. One of the things that makes that possible is when, in fact, we as communities step forward and take care of each other. So that was sort of a fuller comment on what our consent calendar does, because we are a city that does that. We're not only the city that does that with regard to what, how we as a city staff and, and electives function, but some of the things that I've done in the past week have indicated we're a community of people that do that. And so I wanted to highlight a couple of those things. One of those, on Tuesday, the 26th, I had the pleasure of meeting with Livermore High School Student Forum with a number of city staff, some from the library, some from Park Traffic. And I'm forgetting one other. With regard to some of the issues that the students see, this is a way that the students are caring for each other, but also caring about their community, that some of that work is going forward. I really appreciate that we have that, that connection. I appreciate being able to be part of that. I was part of the tree planting on the 28th, which part of Public Works, that, that was, and beautification. Up in Springtown, building a grove, second graders are finding out about how, how we work together to, to build forward, to, to build a green community. On the 29th, I attended the Cal Cities Housing meeting. I had mentioned before that I'm part of the Housing Economic and Community Development, and we discussed some of the ongoing legislation in, in Sacramento, some of which I'll be discussing with our representatives this coming week as part of leadership development and meeting with the, with, with representatives. Then on, on, oh, on Sunday, on Sunday, the first, I attended Darshana, which is the Hindu community's outreach to the community, to all of us to talk about what, what their history is. This is a way of, of, again, recognizing how we think about integrating all of the people of our community. And then on Wednesday, the 4th, I had the privilege of attending the Access Community Health 50th anniversary. Access Community Health does amazing work in our community. It is one of our deep partners in how we take care of health, physical, mental, dental, all the things that make people whole. Access Community Health has been doing that for 50 years. It was such a pleasure to be part of that. Councilmember Carling has talked about the Dreammakers and Risk Takers and the farmer's market. I will, you know, those were great to be part of as well. I think I've probably gone on long enough. But thank you so much for allowing me to be part of this community. It is, I'm so grateful.
Thank you. No, no apologies, Ms. Thank you. No, no apologies necessary for going on long when you're talking about such positive things. I just, I, I had a busy couple of weeks as well. The one, one thing I do just want to mention before we close is on the past Wednesday, the fourth. Along with Councilmember Kick, we had the pleasure of doing sixteen advisory board and committee interviews. From what I've understood, the biggest turnout ever. We interviewed for Housing Authority, Library Board, Historic Preservation, Beautification. And the Youth Advisory Commission. I was so impressed with the applicants, their commitment to the community, how much they all had to bring. I mean, we had to actually sadly turn down incredible candidates. Who we strongly encouraged to come back, apply for something else. They, they were all so good. It was, it was a marathon. We were there for about five hours. That not including our dinner, dinner break. It was just phenomenal. I mean, the, the, the quality of the candidates. The commitment of the community members to get involved was just outstanding. It was, it was so heartwarming. It was really a heartwarming. Five hours. And we, we enjoyed it. And I think we have some great new members of those commissions and boards. We're very lucky and. So that's the only thing I will report on this evening. Lots of other exciting stuff going on, but we'll have plenty of time for that in future meetings. So with that, this evening, we are going to adjourn the meeting. In honor of a longtime Livermore resident. A longtime friend of the community. On April twenty-third, Clay Felicitas passed away. Clay grew up in Tubbsville and graduated from Granada High School and served in the US Navy. He was a school community liaison, working with that youth, at-risk youth and served for fifteen years as our police chaplain. Tonight's meeting will be adjourned in his honor and memory to a special City Council Budget Workshop. On Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at five PM here at the Civic Center Meeting Hall. Thank you all very much and this meeting is adjourned.